Welcome everyone, thank you for coming to the City of Gilbert Regulars City Council Meeting. Today's date's July 9th, 2024 at 6:01 PM. Present is interim clerk Mike Skurbeck, Councillor Potenin, Councillor Heitzman, Mayor Smith, and Councillor Pulis. Also in attendance is Attorney Lindsey and campground host Wendy. And we do have a roll, we do have a quorum, not a roll call. I just did that. And if everybody would please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we did have in addition...
An addition to the check register, another printed sheet from 626 through 79. And then our new business, we had terminated the contract, I don't think it's a contract, but it's just between the cities, so I have that, I need.
All move, support. Moved by Councillor Pulis, supported by Councillor Heitzman for the additions. And to clarify, the register is going to go out under the consent agenda? Or, correct, okay. For the registry to go under the consent agenda and then for new business, determination of the wood purchase contract between West Forty and the city. Item D, under new business, correct. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pulis say nay, none, motion carries four to zero. And then the consent agenda.
Move.
Moved by Councillor Pulis, supported by Councillor Heitzman. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pulis say nay, none, motion carries four to zero. We doing the...
Yes, we are.
Yeah, okay.
So we dated this at our last meeting, now we're...
And now we're doing a public hearing, correct. So do I have a motion to suspend our normal meeting for a public hearing? Moved by Councillor Pulis, supported by Councillor Heitzman to suspend our regular meeting at 6:04 PM. And we will open to a public hearing. And the public hearing is for City Ordinance Number 31.25 Personnel Committee, City of Gilbert. And this is to establish a personnel committee amongst council to... How would you deal with the city personnel issues?
As already up in the ordinance, the powers are reduced in meeting times and establishment, composition of the group who will be there and as stands, it will be two council members, because if we go to three, then we'd have a forum and it would be a council meeting. So typically in most cities, this is how it's set up and that's why we do it that way.
Mayor, can I comment on that just briefly?
Yes.
So our clerk is exactly right. The one piece of comment that I wanted to make is the, the council can have any of the city management or officers or leaders that they like work with as kind of liaisons to that, but the two council members would primarily consist of the committee.
Right.
And Mayor.
Correct.
Along with...
The mayor can be a council member and your city clerk would also be part of your personnel committee. Because when you do things like annual reviews and things like that, the council's not going to do that because they don't work with people every day. So those are done, department acts will be done by the city clerk or administrator, employees will be done by the department act. So that's how it all shakes up.
As liaisons to the personnel committee.
Correct.
Yeah, right.
Well, if there's any... Is there a republic?
Doesn't look like it.
Doesn't look like it, but if so, then we can...
Is there a requirement on how much time we got to give?
Brian, I'm sorry, is there a requirement on how much time we have to have a public hearing? It doesn't appear any, but he's here to comment on it.
Does anybody in the audience have a comment on the personnel committee?
Sounds like a good idea.
I move to close.
Moved by Councillor Pulis, supported by Councillor Heitzman, we'll close our public hearing at 6:07.
That's pretty amazing.
PM. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pulis say nay, none, motion carries four to zero. And do I have a motion to reconvene our regular council meeting?
Both.
Moved by Councillor Pulis, supported by Councillor Heitzman to reconvene our regular council meeting at 6:08 PM. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pulis say nay, none, motion carries four to zero. Do we have any public input?
My name is Dylan Horn and I live in the City of Gilbert up on New Jersey Avenue. I'm also the owner of Grilled Cheese Galore. I am a transient merchant as the city classifies me. I am requesting that city council look through City Ordinance 115.08. That is the prohibited activities for transient merchants. According to this, on line D, I am not allowed to operate before the hours of 7:00 AM or after the hours of 9:00 PM. As we know with the Fourth of July Festival, all the outside vendors were operating well past 9:00 PM against city ordinances going forward. I would just like to make that note and corrected. So down the line, we don't ever have any gray area on what is allowed and what is not allowed.
What do you recommend, how late would you want it to be?
It depends. It depends on the event. So the street dance went till 11:30 PM. So that is the event that was organized to go till that time. So it'd have to be either on an event basis, but then you have to declare who the governing authority is to give that permission to transient merchants.
You just make it till midnight and then cover everybody and everything?
Would it be okay to make something like, here's the normal time for when an event is completed?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
What we could do theoretically or potentially, what we could do is tie it to the declaration of a city festival and limit it to those locations. That is typically what attends street dances, the Fourth of July, Third of July, and all those attendant functions, because it, that's the mechanism that the city uses to allow the service of alcohol outdoors beyond the norm spaces. And it may, it may, it may jive together with the same effect.
So when we claim, when we make a determination we're going to have a city festival, then we can set on hours?
The declaration of a city festival then would automatically remove that, that outer time limit for the service of food trucks and transient vendors.
So you have to write that in a new ordinance then?
We could, we could include it.
Amend it, amend the ordinance?
Yeah, we could amend 11508 and specifically that line item to say, except during, during a declared city festival.
City festival.
Which brings onto the radar screen the crawl for the cure coming up.
And if I may speak, this had come up probably 15 years ago also. And the one issue, they looked at changing it after, and that's fine, they can put it till 2:00 in the morning. Things have changed in the last 15 years, but one of the reasons why that was an issue was due to generators running until 1, 2 o'clock in the morning near the residential areas. But now that the generators have obviously, they're running around at 58 to 70 decibel compared to the 80 to 90 that it used to be, they're much quieter. That was the reason why it was cut off at 9:00 unless there was a festival. So, but the generators have gotten a lot better in the last 15 years because they're only running up to about 70 decibel. So.
Yeah, there was one generator I heard during our event that was pretty loud.
There was no muffler on it, yeah.
Yeah. And I was surprised it was as close to the band as it was. It, it was loud.
So it's usually not an issue, it's, it's, it was changed, it wouldn't be having a good deal just?
So to amend the ordinance, do we need a three meeting events? So we have to do it just like a complete change? You can't even amend without one time, it's got to be a three, three times to get it changed.
Correct. There, there is a charter change that you could make that would, that would cut short that process. Under Minnesota state law, an ordinance change theoretically can be done, best practice is two meetings, but it can be done theoretically in one under Minnesota state law. We're, the, the public is given some extra protection under our, under our charter with a, with a little bit of a longer proceeding.
It's not that big of a deal.
Yeah.
I'm not wiped out administratively over it.
Sound good Dylan?
Thanks guys, appreciate it.
Thank you Dylan.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else for public hearing? Or public, public input? Public hearing, you're up next.
Where are you at?
Actually, it's a long story. No one else? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the reports from the mayor and council. I want to, I hope everybody had a good Fourth of July. It was busy for us. I want to thank everybody that volunteered for the kitty parade and the races afterwards. It went, I believe, fairly well, except for waiting for the jets to fly over. That was a little disappointing. I had everybody lined up in a human high because we knew they were coming, so I had HI with everybody that participated and we were waiting. They never showed.
They didn't.
Nope. So we started the races and 20 minutes into the races, there they come in a total different direction, but it was still awesome. They did the little wing thing and we, they acknowledged, it was pretty cool. Would have been better if it was a little orchestrated and timely, but...
Yeah, why would they give you a time if they're not going to stick to that timeline?
They had to stop by Pike Lake, so it took them a while.
Yeah, hell, I thought they were going to fly over Goaback too and...
I heard them fly over, I didn't see.
Yeah.
Ah, they were low.
They were low.
They do Island Lake and Caribou and Pike and Grant and just one big circle.
Yeah, but you'd think that they'd be good enough at it to, to stick to a timeline, just my thoughts on it.
Well, when you're doing 700 miles an hour, you should be able to get there pretty quick.
Yeah, for sure.
But...
Haven't been late on a Delta flight in a long time.
But no, it's Fourth of July, it sounds like, with everything with the city and the event, it all went fairly good. Exceptionally good, weather held out somewhat. So, but again, thanks volunteers that stepped up and helped out with the kitty parade and the races afterwards. It was, it was fun. There was, I'm guessing, maybe 100, 125, 30 people that showed up, so it was a good time. Um, that's pretty much all I have. Councillor Potenin?
Yeah, boy, a big thank you to any volunteer that, volunteers for anything, especially kitty events, kid events, you know, that's kids, and I know I looked forward to all that stuff when I was young and, you know, it's good to do anything akin for kids, so I appreciate the volunteers that helped them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councillor Heitzman?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Pulis?
Yeah, the only thing I want to add to that is I want to thank the Gilbert Police Department, the Fire Department for keeping control of the Third of July activities. I mean, they're all over the place, the streets were packed, it was a huge event. And then, yeah, I was on the help with the kitty parade stuff and see those kids' faces and handing out them envelopes and the cash, they all wanted cash, they were running for the cash. Come to the races and you'd see multiple people piling in for the cash, so that was awesome to see. So I'll probably be doing that again next year, but big thanks to everyone that came out to the event and stuff. It was, it was fun. That's all I got.
Thank you. And we'll move on from reports from staff and boards and commissions. Fire chief will skip.
He's got nothing.
City Attorney Lindsey.
Uh, thank you Mayor, no formal report, but I am going to answer questions if there are.
Thank you. Chief Teacher?
A couple items. First thing, Third of July went pretty well. Every year we seem to see the call volume going down a little bit. I just started out 5:00, we thought it'd be rough, we had a car coming to town, intoxicated driver hit three vehicles and a motorcycle. And then at the end of the parade, we had another intoxicated person hit another couple of vehicles. So that was pretty much the excitement for the Third of July. Fourth of July, we had a couple fights for the Fourth of July, custody, a couple charges, so nothing too exciting, so it was a pretty good year.
And the one thing I have for follow-up is, last council discussed about the seat on the drive washout and whose property that was. I met with a right-of-way, a right-of-way agent from St. Louis County and they were able to track it back and Bob, you're probably the only one here that I remember this far back out there, no pun intended. Do you remember a township called Masali Mountain at all?
Yeah, I've heard, you know, about it many times.
We tracked it back to, that was Masali Mountain Township. And everybody did a land grab, Virginia grabbed from Midway, Vale and Ebbot grabbed that township and Gilbert grabbed their section. And for some reason, the county, they, because they have township, they, they weren't taking care of the roads at time. St. Louis County took over that road. Gilbert kept that section. So technically, the City of Gilbert is not, nothing, anything we found, there was nothing to show that St. Louis County has any responsibility towards that property after they dissolved Masali Mountain Township, I believe it was called. So we couldn't find it here when it was all...
But the records show that we actually have ownership of it?
Yes, that, we, that, that might cross, part of Florida was even part of Masali Mountain Township, I believe, so...
But the thing is, can we give it back to the county? Because that road is going to need some work here shortly. And with the St. Louis County tax that there is, where they can, you know, they're doing these roads at, you know, tax expense of mostly outsiders, you know, if they, if we could give it back to them, because that road will need to be done after we're done with that water treatment plant, that road needs to be done, and if they would accept that road back, I think we should look into it. Because it's just going to be more expensive to us that, you know, we could put onto the county and they could pay through, you know, the tax that they have on everything that, what, 1% or whatever they implemented 10 years ago, that pays for a lot of our road work now. So they could take over that too and hopefully they would be able to get monies to do it and it wouldn't come out of our pockets. So I don't know what the process is to have them acquire it. I don't know, Brian, if you've ever heard of anything like that?
I've been involved in a few, Mayor, but we can, we can contact them and tender it back. They don't necessarily have to accept it. And where I've seen it, where I've seen that type of a transaction work more commonly is if there's some sort of a swap. Because the, the conversation always involves an evaluation of the road, how much cash is going to be needed in the near future? And the county typically likes to try to offset that.
Might be an opportune time since we're spending $60,000 on the storm water problem there. It might, we kind of have some skin in the game, right? So would you handle that or?
I could reach out, make a contact to get the ball moving, but ultimately I'll take yourself.
Because I know the, the county has Indiana, you know, they, they're the ones that own Indiana Avenue. So I don't know if there's any swap that, I mean, we don't want to lose them taking Indiana because they, they chip sealed it a few years back, which would have been expensive for us to do. So, yeah, I don't know if a swap would be possible anywhere with the properties that we have, you know?
I can, I can make contact with the, with the attorney that last worked on a project with, and just see what, what they're, what they're looking at and how favorably they're looking at taking over the road right now. Maybe just to get the conversation started.
Yeah.
This might be a swing and a miss, but the state runs the boat launch, right? That's their property, their project?
Yeah, DNR, yeah.
But is it? To the state? I don't know.
Yeah, it's a DNR that owns the...
It's a DNR. It used to be ours and we gave it to them so that they could rebuild it and redo it, right?
And they redid the boat launch, okay.
Here, do you want the road that goes with it?
I used to help my dad put the dock up when I was like seven, eight, we did own it, the City of Gilbert.
Right. So I mean, is, if the, if the county doesn't want it, would the state permit?
Well, I don't know. I think you're reaching for the state to have the road letting...
DNR will let.
County with their tax dollars would be more willing because I know they did, they did different employment with those tax dollars. They had the big sign up, this is from the county sales tax, you know, this was...
There's probably not going to be a better time.
Task.
Since we're putting all this money in the...
Yeah, right.
Good a time as any, so.
Right, because then they won't have to redo that culprit if they do own it, you know?
A lot of chuckles going out over there, Chief.
Pretty put a deer stand on it and see what the yard is.
Yeah. Right?
You don't have to tell them everything.
And then the other thing I have is, we shall complete all the GIS entries for all the damage that we unowled. I will try to have an email sent to council this week with the list, just in case. Can we still submit after that, just in case we missed them? I'm sure we have. I was on the backside working on Saturday and I was surprised there was some washouts there too, we could cancel, and that was not marked. I think one of my matches, it was the campus pit, so I'm not sure that's our problem. But there's probably some we missed, I'll get a list of, and you guys can review it. If there's something we missed, let me know and we'll go back out and GPS it, or GPS it. And we should be good for submission for any type of funding or whatever else.
Have you heard of any type of timeline that they're going to take to respond or?
I think, I've been a little worried to me the mall with the by-walkers stuff because officers were pressing stuff there. We're hoping within three months. Because bills are stacking up, we're well over half million dollars on the by-walk side of repairs. The bills are easier stacking up personally, so I'll try to get some answers, a little more definite answers on that, so...
Perfect. Nothing else?
That's all I have here, Colonel.
Thanks, Chief.
I think we forgot something. I forgot to sync the Fourth of July committee.
The Third of July.
The Third of July committee, yep. Well, for the parade, yes, they put together a good parade. Thank you, Third of July Committee. And then we'll move to the campground host Wendy.
Evening everyone. Well, the Fourth of July was pretty successful. We were full. I did have one incident where back in the ease, a camper got drunk and took his car, drove through three sites with people in it and out. I ended up taking his keys away and putting him in the office till the next day. I said, you either give me the keys or I call, call it in. So, but that was the only incident. Other than that, everybody had a good time. One camper did get stuck with all the rain in the site, had to be winched out. But the sites were otherwise pretty good. We got the volleyball net up, the big volleyball net, and it's been being used a lot. I had a gentleman from town call me and ask if his family could come down and play on it. And I said, most definitely you can come down. And so they did and they spent the afternoon there with the volleyball net. We also got the big campground flag going, so it helps people direct to where they got to go to the campground. I checked on our, our dashboard today and we are at 60% capacity, which on a Tuesday, that's pretty darn good. So even during the week in July, we're booking up solid. I had one issue I wanted to ask about and that is smoking marijuana. All right, I, I don't know if you've had, put an ordinance into effect as to the rules of smoking marijuana out in the open or not, but we've had some of that in the campground.
The Office of Cannabis Management and the current laws do not allow you to be out in public smoking marijuana. I think, Chief, you are well aware of what the rules are.
Yeah, I believe the St. Louis County is working on it. I think it's tied to the air activity and the way you ended it with smoking.
So I should probably put in my policies that there's no public smoking of marijuana.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I believe we discussed that early on about public space, public campground, that it wasn't...
Allowed.
Allowed, yeah.
Allowed in public space.
Right.
Right.
What do you think I should do when I see it?
Report it.
Report it?
Yep, so we can, so law enforcement can document it and, and deal with it.
All right. I mean, I've told them not to smoke outside, but, you know?
Yeah.
That's as far as I've went, so.
Yeah.
But you can smell it when you walk by.
And it's not your job to be the, the police officer of the, of the campground.
Right.
You're entrusted with its security and its care. And your discretion is the better part of valor, I would think on that one, as you did with the car keys. You know, it can't be any different than that.
Yeah.
It's, it's, what do you think is the right thing to do? You know, knock it off, go in your cabin or go in your camper, you know?
Right.
You're not allowing, just like the noise complaint. Give them the warning, if they don't adhere, you're out of there.
Yeah, okay.
And let, let law enforcement deal with it then.
All right, thank you. And that's about all I have, thank you.
Excellent.
So, bring it back to tie, I was brought to my attention that there was an accident the night of the rain, that somebody plowed into the dental building?
Correct, yes.
I don't know if you want to get into details of that, I was surprised that I, I hadn't heard about until this weekend.
Yeah, he sneezed, but he was also drunk, so. I guess that's kind of a nutshell, so that's what comes to the front door, yeah, he went through the building, so.
So what was your response time?
15 minutes?
So it just so happened the squad leader of town was actually right here, so.
Yeah, I heard it, if he had been able to climb over, he would have damaged the whole building because he would have hit all the plumbing and everything.
Yeah, he took out the front wall and that's the second wall in that building.
Right.
They're moving fast now.
And he was heading towards Evlith in fact.
Oh, heading, yes.
Towards Evlith. He came right across lanes and nailed it.
He sneezed hard round.
Yeah, it was a...
He moved up steep now.
So beware, when you're out there driving, that's what you have to deal with. There's a possibility of somebody like that that you meet.
Yeah, I don't think it'll happen again, I should say.
Never say never, in our line of work.
Yeah, that would have been, yeah, that would have made a difference.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, we really have that one to stand. That's something to say in the head of this.
All right. That, that's all you had, Wendy?
Yeah.
Thank you. We'll move on to the advisory boards.
Cross that one.
Cross that one. Interim clerk, Mike?
No, nothing to see here.
Thank you. And we have no old business. We'll move on to new business. The adoption of amendment to ordinance thirty-one twenty-five.
Same package, you don't have to read it, right?
Yep.
Move.
All right, Brian, I don't have to read it since it was.
Support.
Moved by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Heitzman. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polis say nay. None. Motion carries four to zero.
So this needs two more readings?
No.
This is it?
Is it?
This is it?
We should probably have one more because this is, the, the language is altered, but one more reading and we're good.
Okay, next meeting.
Yep.
Yep, perfect.
What do you want to do?
Oh, just, just hold it over and put it on, just continue on the agenda for the next meeting.
Put it back on for one more.
Then it goes into effect thirty days after that.
Thirty days after, correct.
Right, okay.
Perfect. And under new, the public sale of the two thousand seventeen Polaris Sportsman five seventy update.
We just never really crossed over that line. We approved the purchase, the new one, but we didn't approve this part. So I know Ty's gonna sell it. He's having it around, he has bids, whatever, but you just, last thing, you know.
Move.
Support.
Moved by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Heitzman to approve the public sale of the two thousand.
Wait, hold on.
So, so, Mayor, on this one, what we should do, the council should make a motion, uh, to, make a motion to declare it surplus property. Then you can immediately, uh, offer up the public sale.
Okay, I'll make that motion to declare surplus property.
Are you gonna rescind your prior?
Rescinding your prior.
Prior motion. And I will then rescind my support for your prior motion.
And then re-support.
And I will re-support your motion declaring the two thousand seventeen Polaris Sportsman five seventy surplus equipment.
Excellent. Motion by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Heitzman to declare the two thousand seventeen Polaris Sportsman five seventy as public surplus. And it is available for sale. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed say nay. None. Motion carries four to zero. And then, under D, we'll skip, we'll come back to C. Under D, terminating the contract between West Forty Campground and the city of Gilbert.
Move.
Moved by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Heitzman to terminate the de-contract between the city of Gilbert and West Forty Co-, West Forty Campground for the wood purchase. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Say nay. None. Motion carries four to zero. And any miscellaneous announcements?
Oh, just reminder, crawl for the cure next, next week, right?
That's two weeks.
Hmm.
When's, is it next week already?
Yeah.
Eighteenth?
Yeah.
July eighteenth?
What's that? What's that?
Oh, yeah.
What's on eighteen?
Wow, that's quick.
Crawl for the cure.
Crawl for the cure, coming up on, uh, the weekend of the eighteenth through the twenty-first, I believe.
Yeah.
Uh, they are planning on having their band again on Friday evening, so anybody of the public, please come out and, uh, join the festivities. Uh, fire department will be hosting the beer garden and.
Selling the bronze.
And food. Uh, last year, there was quite a few people. It was a pretty good turnout. So if anybody's interested in, uh, coming out on a Friday evening to check things out, please come on down.
I have a question. Uh, did the city end up using the C section, the overflow which would've been on Sherwood Drive to, to, to facilitate blocking that for traffic?
So far, I haven't filled the, the other sections, so.
So Sherwood Drive?
So far, yes.
Uh, that's gonna be, to be determined because, uh, with the amount of rain we've been having, Sammy's been keeping an eye on that original site for campers. And if it is too saturated, if we get any more rain, then he was gonna pull that area, then that section C would be opened up. And then we would block it off. That's the last discussion I had with him. I asked him what he thought the ground was. He said it was good then, but now we had that last rain. Is it gonna be dry in a week? It, hopefully, fingers crossed, that we don't get any more.
My request then, um, if we end up having to have people on Sherwood and close Sherwood, um, is we can find a transportation plan because my campground's gonna have a whole bunch of people coming here to town. And normally, they would take Sherwood to get to the connector trail to get up to the O H B park. So we just need to have a path for them to go through the alleys or something like that for the non-stroke individuals.
Yeah, well, I'll have a talk with Sam and see what, what can, I, I believe Jeff is coming up too, and we'll try and figure it out. Fingers crossed that we don't have to close Sherwood and we can use the field behind the ball field. But it was pretty soppy after these last rains. It was dry when I talked to him. He thought it'd be good, but then... And I think it's supposed to rain tomorrow. So, but yeah. So, yeah, please come on out. Enjoy the festivities Friday night. And, and for the crawl for the cure. That's all I have.
All I got.
Excellent. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Moved by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Heitzman to adjourn our regular city council meeting at six thirty-eight P M. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polis say nay. None. Motion carries four to zero.
Is that a record?
That's a record.
Is it?
That is a record.
I'll have to make sure.
We were on time by one minute and.
Yep.
I'm gonna take a picture for council skids. It's just.